Good evening. It's six o'clock. Welcome to the April 16, 2024 Finley Council Meeting, regular session. We will start this evening's meeting with roll call, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann.
Here.
Mr. DeArment.
Here.
Ms. Frishy.
Here.
Mr. Greeno.
Here.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Warnicki.
Here.
And Mr. Wobser.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the previous city council minutes. Mr. Palmer.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Greeno. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the previous city council minutes say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay, they are accepted. We do not have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda. We have no proclamations. We have no recognition retirement resolutions. We have no petitions. We have two oral communications, and we're going to start as they arrive first with Dwight Henley from Finley, and he'd like to speak about the previous board meeting comments.
My name is Dwight Henley. I live here in Finley. I'm here to discuss what apparently somebody called people Nazis or whatever during the meeting. For clarity and honesty, I do not know them.
Can you just take the light on?
Yep. Okay. I do not know the person. I don't really care for politicians. When it comes to left and right, I believe they have a good place as traction in the snow. You know, I cannot stand politics as it goes. I do not agree with the term used as Nazi. I think that we use that too much, and it cheapens the atrocities that the Nazis have done. As probably one of the few people in this area that's actually sat down with Nazis from the 30s and 40s and had an opportunity to sit with them and understand their mindset. It's kind of a unique choice to be in. But when it comes to calling an elected official names, I don't have a problem with that. And I'll tell you why. We have case history. We have a lot of law that says name-calling is not a fighting word. And it doesn't bode well when we restrict the speech of others. I think one of the greatest mistakes that we ever made is driving a lot of people underground because you don't see what they're doing. You cannot see their actions. When we see what people do by what they say, it brings to light those that we can oppose on not necessarily a moral ground, but a viewpoint that we say, hey, that is distasteful in our body politic. If someone wants to call you names, grow a tougher skin. I spent 26 years in the United States military, four years with the United States Army, the rest with the Air Force. People called me names. I got used to it. If you don't like it, deal with it. That's what you have to do. I know you want to pass rules. I looked at a few court precedent on this, and recently in Trumbull County, you had a commissioner that was arrested for criticizing the sheriff and called him a few things about the way the jail was managed. The court, the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Ohio said, here in America, we do not arrest our political opponents. This case tests that longstanding norm as well as our constitutional robust protections for free speech that allow us to criticize our representatives and public officials. I hate to say it. It's gotten to that point, it's used so often, that Nazi is now a criticism. It's not an actual fact of what somebody is. We also have to look at what the Sixth Circuit has said. The freedom of individuals verbally to oppose or challenge official action without thereby risking an arrest is one of the principal characteristics by which we distinguish a free nation from a police state. Houston v. Hill was what they had cited. And that was McCurdy v. Montgomery County. I'd also like to take and look at what the Sixth Circuit said. Again, courts have found that the use of obscenities is not sufficient disruption to permit ejection from a public meeting. In Leonard v. Robinson, Sixth Circuit, 2007, the Sixth Circuit found that it is unlawful to remove a speaker for using the words, and I quote, "goddamn" in a public meeting. Please look at, it's protected under the First Amendment. Also, I would like to say, you can also look at the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals in 2002, where they looked at Chuplinsky and said that it's changed and it needs to be updated, and that the fighting words doctrine is more narrowly described. Okay. Can I just finish quickly?
Wobser.
Make a motion to give Dwight.
Second, Mr. Greeno.
Enough time.
All those in favor of allowing Mr. Henley to wrap up your discussion?
Thank you.
Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? All right.
I'm almost done. I'm sorry I took so long. I haven't done any public speaking since yelling at troops. You know, hey, knuckleheads, get your butt in line, let's go. It's true. As I came in, Mr. Harrington had said, good evening, and I told him how I would yell at the troops. Don't tell me what kind of evening to have. Or I would yell, who told you? Again, I'd like to say, I do not condone name-calling, but the risk of driving people underground is worse. The one thing that I would say is, if I have it here, yep, if you can't stand a bit of name-calling, you cannot represent everyone in the community. Somebody's going to hate you. I just live by the motto, great. I love it. I got another person to hate me, I'm in good shape. A fool is, and on the Nazi comments and on the disparaging comments, a fool is known by their words. A greater fool is known by those that restrict those words. So you have to understand, who played who the fool by saying you can't disparage, let them do it. You bring out their thought. As I've traveled across this world, seen many, many people of many different cultures, from Asia to Europe, Africans, Muslim, Christian, Jew, I've learned that if you cannot respect each other, though, as I close, and you cannot debate honestly and with integrity, that means you have no argument. So as they call names, that means they have no argument to give. Allow them to do it, because it allows you to better understand what goes on. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wobser.
Mr. Henley, first off, thank you for your service to our country and training our troops and making them great. Obviously, you did a good job of it.
I did a lot of crying. I got stuck with the Army a lot as an Air Force guy. What? Where's the mint on the pillow?
I appreciate your perspective on this. It's an interesting topic. If you had to take your six minutes of your talk and put it into one sentence, how would you surmise that for us, please?
As I had said, a fool is known by their words, a greater fool is known by those that do not allow them to speak.
So your point is just simply let people get up, have their four minutes, and let it go? Is that, I mean, I don't want, I want to summarize, but I want to be accurate.
To a point. If they're coming up and they're threatening, as had just happened, what was it, in San Francisco, where the young protester had said she wanted to meet him at home and kill him?
Right.
That, that's a line too far. But name-calling is reasonable under the idea that we all got, we got called names in school, on the schoolyard. I was a redhead, you know? And when you, you know, we grew up close to a reservation. There were a lot of things said about redheads near a reservation. If you've gone, I've gone to Vietnam, blond hair, blue eyes, they call him the devil. Because in one of the Buddhist sects, blond hair and blue eyes is what the devil was.
Okay.
It's, at what point do we, do we shut them down so much? Remember, the Nazis took over piece by piece by shutting down political speech.
Right.
They started with the brown shirts heckling people in a meeting, then they took over the meetings and stopped people from criticizing them. I take the, I have people at work, and when I worked in the military, if I screwed up, I had young troops that'd come up and go, wow, that was stupid. And that, and when you take a step back and go, what was the criticism? Was it valid or not? That's how you move forward. If it was something where, yeah, that was stupid, wow, I made a mistake. If it was something that was based on information they didn't have, then I could talk to that troop and say, hey, here's the information you don't have, here's the information I do, let's move out together. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Frishy.
So just a quick question. What would you like to see the ad hoc committee recommend? Do you think we should change things or leave them as is?
I would make a clear standing that threats of violence do not stand. A little bit of name-calling, I'm okay with it. It happens. If it, if it's one of those things where it's, they come in just to disrupt and just go, you're a dumbass, you're a dumbass, you're a dumbass, doing those things, that's disruptive. But name-calling based on an argument of, hey, what you're doing here reminds me of the communists, or the socialists, or the Nazis, let it go. But if it's just to disrupt, then I have an issue.
Mr. Russell.
Mr. Henley, I'm going to read the paragraph in our current city council rules of procedure considering, under the title, "Other Prohibited Remarks," and then I'd like your thoughts on this, on this current rule. It says, "Any person who causes actual disruption by making personal attacks, slanderous remarks, or other disruptive conduct while addressing the council shall be barred from further participation in the meeting by the presiding officer unless permission to continue is granted by a majority vote of council members present."
The, the way that I would look at it is, what did the Sixth Circuit just say about the Clark County case, where the guy had the F the police shirt on? That, that set a standard. First, you have the fighting words doctrine, which has been very well limited. Chupinski, which was the original idea in 1942, was very broad, but it's been narrowed as, as the course of discussion has changed. It's just like on TV. In 1975, even after 11 o'clock, if I showed a woman in a bikini, I could, a TV station could get in trouble. Now we have them at 4 o'clock in the afternoon, Baywatch, you know? But it's, we have to consider what happened in Clark County. He was right there. The officers were called thugs, effing thugs, things like that. I don't agree with using that kind of profanity. I think that is what makes our body of politics so toxic now, is that we don't respect each other. But look at what the Sixth Circuit, because it is one of the most forceful on free speech. When I've looked at the Ninth Circuit, when I've looked at the Eighth, the First and Second, you know, out on the East Coast, it shocks me at how much the Sixth Circuit protects the ability to call a public official names. And what we get into there, one of the negative side effects is if we limit that too much and we escort somebody out for calling somebody stupid, or a Nazi, or whatever, it puts, it puts every taxpayer in the room in a position where they're culpable for your actions of removing them, because they're going to take a lawsuit, which can increase city taxes. And then the negative thing, because you've put it in writing, they can do a claim that it's a pattern in practice, and take that to a federal court under a 1982 or 1983 complaint for civil rights under Title 42. And if they win on a Title 42 complaint, my background is government acquisition, you know, in the military, in the Defense Supply Center when I was there, they can go to GSA, they can go to Office of Federal Procurement Policy, and bar, get a debarment on the city until that case is either done or they're paid. So you have to think beyond just somebody insulting you, what's the larger field here? You know, I, I'm, in contracting and acquisition in the government, when I was in the military, our job was to buy the land mine, which means all the furniture, everything on a base, everything on it, I bought for the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, Coast Guard, I'd buy things. So I always said, our job was to buy the land mine and then make sure we didn't stand on it, which means not having what we did, our acquisition, blow up in our face. And if we go the wrong way, it could.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. And I appreciate your civility and all your remarks.
Yes, and I don't want you to think that I'm calling anybody here a Nazi, or when I was using a reference of dumbass. I'm not doing that. I do not believe in that kind of thing in a public.
I've never heard the word Nazi in front of council. I've heard the word fascist.
Okay. Well, the fascist.
But similar.
But.
Okay, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second speaker this evening is Ann Cole. Where's Ann? There she is. Ann is going to speak about council procedures and the ad hoc committee.
Well, I'm Ann Cole. I'm Ward 2B. I live on Hillstone Drive. Good evening, council. I went to express my appreciation for the right to address this body and the individuals within it. My dad always said that if you don't stand for something, you're going to fall for anything. So there are a few things I wanted to address. First, I want to take you back to the days before you were a member of this council. Perhaps you were uninterested and uninformed, as most of our residents are, or perhaps you wanted a seat on council because you yourselves were frustrated and felt underserved by our local government, and voiceless and powerless. It's a hopeless feeling, and I wanted to remind you of how that felt, and how it now feels to those of you, to those of us who come to council meetings and watch as our elected representatives in this body are gavelled into silence, and how we, the people, are gavelled into silence by another impatient and argumentative representative. Council, you ask us for the honor and privilege to serve us, and we granted it. I say again, you serve us, and each other, and finally, the city. So thank you, Holly, for taking the people of your ward and this city under your wing and representing us just like you promised. Those who gavel you down need to show the same servant attitude that you do. Exercise patience and engage in civil discussion like adults. Those who hold the gavel do so because they were given that honor by others, and they need to honor others in its use. Second, it's we, the people, who you asked to represent, not the city. I would ask that you continue to listen to the people in these proceedings and to put our voices ahead of your own. Humble yourselves, make the time, and let's have lively discussions, as if you weren't physically elevated above us. Third, with that in mind, city business needs to remain public and transparent and done out in the full view of those you represent. To some of us, it appears that new rules regarding public comment are nearly complete. But I don't remember seeing any changes made in this public and transparent way. Were there discussions over coffee or cocktails that we weren't invited to? Or did a member of this body unilaterally make changes so the process could be shortened? I believe we are entitled to see and hear every step of every process that may affect us, so I look forward to hearing your explanation. I'm also curious as to how many of you have undergone your required sunshine law training during your current term. Councilman Russell has. It was reported to Auditor Stashak. Anyone else? Finally, I want to remind the members of this body again that each of you sit before us because you asked to, and we granted it. Sitting on council doesn't mean you have all the answers and know all the things. I ask that you approach uncomfortable topics and those with whom you disagree with humility, patience, and a sense of curiosity. Finally, I believe that since a disagreement became contentious and public on April 2, that Council Hellman owes Auditor Stashak an equally public apology in regard to his wealth of information comment. Auditor Stashak is our city fiscal officer, and he should be invited to meetings pertaining to finances, instead of told when the meeting is held as an afterthought. You're all here to serve the people, and we expect those who serve us to do so with dignity, humility, and civility. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks, Ann. Questions or comments? All right. Good evening. Okay. We have no written communications. We will, reports of municipal officers and departments.
Finley Police Department Activities Report for March 2024.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
City Income Tax Monthly Collections Report for March 2024.
Questions or comments? Mr. Station.
Hey, just want to quickly point out, and I've mentioned to you other times, we're grateful to see the withholders, a number be up there a little bit higher, but I have confirmed, and we are looking at another windfall. So the blessings of our windfalls have continued. I would expect that number to level out as we get through the year. I had a conversation with our income tax administrator, she feels the same way, that over time, we're going to see that level out. We're not expecting any more windfalls in that category. And as you can also see, we're down in the individual and down in the business. So I do truly believe this will be the year we normalize on our income tax receipts. So I thought that was noteworthy.
Other questions or comments? Report to be filed.
Finley Fire Department Activities Report for March 2024.
Questions or comments? Report to be filed.
A letter from Police Captain Hendren regarding FFY 2025 Impaired Driving Enforcement Program, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Grant.
Questions or comments? Letter to be filed.
Letter from Police Chief Mathias regarding Ohio Attorney General Law Enforcement Continuing Profession, Professional Training Grant.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
A letter from City Engineer Calb regarding Small Waterline Upgrades, Project Number 35723800.
Questions or comments? Mr. Stashak.
Yeah, I made a note here with regard to the small waterline repairs. And the second part there, we have money coming from the revolving loan fund. One of the things I've mentioned that concerns me as to how we're approaching finances is that we do a lot of things piecemeal without having a meeting to talk about the entire picture. And to that, recently, we heard a proposal for a couple incentive programs, one with the income tax, another with districts. You have an incentive program here with the RLF Fund. It's a phenomenally strong incentive program. Whether or not it's right or wrong to put this money forward is not what I want to discuss. What I want to discuss is, prior to this happening, prior to this proposal coming in, I think the city would have been better served if there was a meeting to discuss, is it appropriate for us to take funds from the revolving loan fund, which is one of our best incentive programs that we have? In other words, are there enough funds? Are there not enough funds? Because we have not promoted that program, I think, as extensively as we could have over the last year, year and a half since COVID. That's my personal opinion, but it goes to the point where I believe there would be more value in speaking in a holistic manner at a higher level with regard to councils' philosophy as to how they want to see funds be used and how it's moved forward. Again, it's not a criticism of the expenditure, it's a suggestion on philosophy moving forward, and I really believe that should be considered. Thank you.
Mayor.
I would just add that the revolving loan fund is CDVG dollars. It has limited use. The revolving loan fund, on an annual basis, Hancock Regional Planning Commission sends out notifications to local bankers informing them as a resource, because one of the qualifications for businesses to receive these funds would be that they have a letter from their lender stating that they need the funding to make the project work, and there's a variety of criteria that go along with that. So we do advertise it, as well as we've done a number of online postings, as well as sent out press releases about it as a program. So yes, we would love to see more local businesses use it. We have kept a portion of funds remaining in that fund to be able to distribute as microloans to the different entities. We just did the Beckett Burgers revolving loan fund application, so we do have sufficient funds with that. This has been common practice for us the last couple of years, because one of the qualifying expenditures of these funds is infrastructure investment into LMI qualifying areas. So happy to have a more robust conversation about that. One of the main reasons that we have been able to put those funds back out into the community recently is because we had a number of significant loans that they paid back, so we had a large amount of money that we had to spend down by a specific point in time, or the state was going to change our allocation, and we would not receive those additional funds. So that is why you have seen a number of those funds deployed out into the community in a more expedited fashion through applicable infrastructure investment.
Letter be filed.
Matt, why did you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you, council, is it okay if he gets up here and discusses it a little bit? All right.
Matt Credon, you're Director of Regional Planning. That's one of the grants that our office submitted. So the grant was originally submitted as a request for, say, $800,000, and the state of And the state of Ohio came back and said, you're approved for $500,000. You have to spend $300,000 in revolving loan fund. Our balance is approximately $750,000. They want our balance, according to HUD, to be $200,000 or less. So there was no discussion about using the revolving loan fund when the grant was submitted. The state of Ohio, who's been warning us for years that our balance is high, this is a competitive grant, and they said, you can get the grant, but you have to spend $300,000 in revolving loan fund. So that's, that's the procedure that was gone through.
Ms. Frishy.
The more we talk, the more I feel like I'm not fully understanding, because I'm not used to seeing the RLF being used to do waterline projects. So that caught my attention, but I was going to save it for discussion when we got down the road. But I don't get it. What, so you applied for a revolving loan fund. You applied for a grant. And then they came back and told you. Did that grant get us discussed with us at any point? Just not argumenting. I'm just asking. Did we ever discuss going for this grant that you applied for?
Yes, since City Council authorized.
And that was CDBG grant?
Correct.
But we usually have CBDG grants that we get that don't usually have matching dollars.
Correct.
They're nodding their, okay, so I've always known the RLF to be used for businesses coming into our community and doing, helping businesses. So we're not helping home break. They're not getting these dollars to do the project. I mean, they're, they're bidding the project, but they're not getting it. They didn't go to the bank and use the RLF. That, I'm, that's where I'm lost at.
Correct. The revolving loan fund is not being used towards businesses. So CDBG allocation requires no match. This is a CDBG critical infrastructure, in which it's competitive across all counties in Ohio. And so part of the revolving loan fund can be used. You can get a waiver from the state to use it for infrastructure, long as it benefits a population that's 51% low to moderate income.
And we have to repay it, just like normal, like with an interest and?
No.
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 Okay.
And so in this case, with competitive grants, with the competitive critical infrastructure, and I've said this before, Council, several times over the last three or four years, the state has notified us, our balance is too high. HUD considers it, it's too high. They want all the city-county revolving loan funds to be around $200,000. HUD views them, you know, there's some, you know, we had $700,000. There's some counties with $1 million. They view those to be stagnant and not being used. And so the state has told us, you know, hey, you, you apply. We may require you to use revolving loan fund dollars. So that's what happened on this grant. The state said, we're not giving you $800,000 because you're sitting on $700,000 of revolving loan fund. We will give you $500,000, and you have to use $300,000 from your revolving loan fund. The revolving loan fund is, is part of the CDBG umbrella.
Okay, so we're not using it as a slush. It's not going to be a new place for us to grab, to cover, if we need to do something quickly. It's simply this grant and this grant only, and then we replenish it, the $300,000 back.
So the $300,000 is not a loan. It's, it's a grant. So that $300,000 will be removed from the revolving loan fund.
Permanently.
It will not revolve back in. Correct.
Mr. Stachak.
Thank you. I, I think all the things you're hearing here are relevant and true and, and part of different perspectives, which goes to my point. If we believe it's time that we need to look at incentive programs, then what I believe as your fiscal officer is, it's time for council, whether it be through appropriations or through strategic planning, or however council feels it's appropriate, to take a look and say, okay, with the programs we have in place today, whether it be the CRA or this, how do we want them used moving forward? And when we know upfront, which we have known for some time, that those balances have been higher, that they are, how progressive or aggressive do you want to get in promoting those programs to your community? Particularly if you're looking or considering or being asked to consider other incentive programs, because this is a phenomenal program, and it reaches the type of businesses you want to reach. In other words, it's, it's reaching mom and pops. It's reaching small businesses. And it has a benefit in that it's, it's causing or participating in the hiring of individuals that don't have a, a, a high net worth or a high value or a high income. It's, there are requirements with this program that individuals be hired that, that otherwise might not have been hired by the business. So there's a lot of great things here. My hope is that council ends up with a better understanding of it and has a conversation holistically, all the way around, how you want to start promoting things like this and other programs in the future. And I think there'll be a lot of value to that. So thanks. I appreciate your perspective as well on the mayor.
Final comment on this debate, it seems to be. Mayor.
No, I'll be very, I'll be very brief. I was just going to add, I would encourage you to read the guidelines of the RLF grant program, because it is very specific. To be, you have been denied for the full amount by your bank. It, it really is a very limited scope. And I agree, as the auditor stated, it can really help small mom and pop shops. I agree, we're going to have more conversation around incentives, but I would not blend those two programs in any sense of the word, because the income tax, the CRA, all of those different programs are very different than what the RLF is able to do. So I just want, I would encourage you to read those. They are on the regional planning website, and they're very limited.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from City Engineer Cal Regarding Project Hat Trick, Project Number 35631500, For Deappropriation of Funds.
Questions? Mr. Wilbser.
Rob, since Jeremy's not here, we're not putting water in at Sheets. Is that correct?
As the original conversation, we are going to run it up to 30, but based on how their water plan works out with pressures and so forth and their needs on campus, it was not, they didn't need that secondary inlet that we were discussing, that one of the reasons we are running it up to 30. Without that need, it didn't make sense to invest these dollars at this time. So that was the part of this, this $900,000 was part of that to run up to 30. We're going to not do that at this point. So we're still meeting the needs along 212, 2 feet hat trick.
That was my question. I was going to say, where the hell the water is coming from?
There were going to be two inlets, if you recall, the original plan.
Understood.
Based on the original, that one inlet will be sufficient at this time.
Okay, and there's no benefit to us doing that now, because we talked about that as an expansion proposal for things happening down the road.
Well, at this point, with the amount of money invested, the reason we were able to see a value for us supporting Sheets in their development there, because originally, the original plans needed that secondary inlet. So it made sense to extend up for future development, as well as suffice the needs of Sheets. But as they've dug into the specs of the water support for that project, the one on 212 is the only one that they need. They're going to have to, they're going to have to have actually a pump house on the location and where we thought that wasn't necessary originally, and then you would have two inlets to support the water circulation, where it'll just be the primary into the site.
Ms. Frishy.
When we originally appropriated for Project Hat Trick, didn't we pull some sewer dollars too? Are we not extending the sewer?
The sanitary is running, and it's going to run across 99.
Not going any further.
It's running across 99 to the north side of the Sheets' location, across the north side of Lowe's.
Mayor.
We did discuss if it made sense to still expand on 230, but given that that had not been a part of the original conversation of just, we didn't want to muddy the waters with the two projects. Additionally, because any development to the east, we wouldn't know where they would need the connections. It didn't make sense to just have a stub end up there.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Grant Administrator Casey Pensinski. Hope I got that right. Regarding CDBG Flexible Grant Program Application 2024 for Miracle Field.
Mr. Russell.
Matt, could you come up and discuss this, and especially the, the request to waive the three readings and kind of fill us in about this? And if you want to, while you're there, if you want to do, well, no, we'll just wait for the next one at the next time.
Okay. So on Monday, March 11th, at 4 o'clock, my email, I got an email from the state that said, we have unexpected grant dollars. This is a Monday. Pre-applications are due Friday. And so we jumped into action. We, we worked with the community foundation. We sent out information to about 100 nonprofits in the county. We sent out information to the villages, talked with the city about projects that they need, and talked with the commissioners about projects that they need. By Friday, we had accumulated 16 pre-applications because of the short period of time. We advised them on what we thought would get funded, but we did not turn any away. So we were, we were not picking and choosing who would win. So the state had us on a very fast timeline. So we submitted 16 pre-applications to the state that Friday. Casey, our grant administrator, put in a tremendous amount of work getting those together. Projects ranged from City of Finley Water and Sewer Lines, County Infrastructure, Village of McComb, YMCA, Miracle Field. The whole gamut of grant pre-applications were submitted. The following week, they notified us that one grant would make, would be opened for a full application. From those 16 applications, they had chosen the Miracle Field to be given the opportunity to apply for the full grant. That grant is due May 2nd. So, and the grant also requires an ordinance from the City of Finley. So the timelines we're looking at, we were notified approximately 10 or 12 days ago that we needed an ordinance executed by the City of Finley to apply for the grant. So for that reason, I'm requesting that the ordinance 2024-52 be given its three, waived the three readings and passed on an emergency basis. That's not our preference, but oftentimes, the state doesn't take into consideration the nuts and bolts that have to happen at the local level. And for just, it's a pet peeve of mine also, and for others in the community. But tomorrow is the big training for the grants that are due June 1st. So they're going to unveil how to and what to, you know, how the process works. You know, we're in the middle of April, and June 1st is the application time. So it used to be in February. I've got a few gray hairs when I remember it was in February. They keep kind of moving it back and moving it back. So it frustrates me too, but this is a great opportunity for the Miracle Field. The application's for $250,000, and the Miracle Field is working on collecting other dollars to make it a larger and scaled project. It would be exercise stations for seniors and those with disabilities, and it would be around the field area, kind of a walking track in which different stations, in which people with limited mobility could exercise. So apologize for the request for waiving the three readings on the emergency basis, but we have no choice if we want access to these funds.
Letter to be filed.
Thank you.
City Planning Commission Staff Report for April 11th, 2024, as well as the agenda for April 11th, 2024, and the minutes of March 14th, 2024.
Questions? Report and agenda and minutes to be filed. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Frishy.
I don't have questions. I just have a comment. I know there was two projects in here in residential areas for putting businesses. And I guess I thought our city ordinances, when we were in residential, don't allow for, you know, home businesses. I know we originally did it with a dog grooming facility, and now it looks like there's two salons, which is great. But in the long term, I just feel like we're getting a little relaxed on it, and that's all I have to say.
Mayor.
Yeah, so they received a conditional use permit, which is revocable. And so we certainly took into the concerns of the neighborhood. With the hair salon that was approved, it is actually up against our park, and it used to be a daycare facility. So even though it is a residential area, it has been operating as a business. The other business is a single-person nail salon. That's the only services other than hair braiding that she does. Again, she wouldn't be able to have more than one client at a time. She wouldn't be able to have any signage, and it would be revocable as well. So we certainly took into consideration, the surrounding properties were notified, and we look at it on a case-by-case basis, determining what business will have impact to the surrounding area.
Report, agenda, and minutes to be filed.
Precipitation and Reservoir Levels Report for First Quarter 2024.
Report to be filed.
Letter from Hancock Regional Planning Commission Grant Administrator, Administrator Casey Pensinski Regarding the CHIP 2024 Program.
Questions? Mr. Russell.
Ask once again for Matt to come up and fill us in on the CHIP.
Obviously, I'm not Casey. Casey Pensinski is over there. She's our grant writer. She does a wonderful job. So just wanted to give her the kudos. The county is applying for the CHIP grant, which is Community Housing Improvement Program. It does emergency repairs for low to moderate income individuals. The grant application will be for $750,000. The city has received this grant every other year for the last about 10 years. Part of it is, when there's a city in the county and the city executes a partnership agreement, the grant, it increases the amount that the county can receive. The county by itself can only receive $500,000. If there's a partnership agreement with the city in the county, they can receive $750,000. So this is the execution of that partnership agreement. There's really no commitment on the behalf of the City of Finley. The grant all goes through Hancock County, administered by Great Lakes and ourselves. And a good number of projects, probably over half of the projects occur within the City of Finley, another half outside in the county. This, we do have time to have the three readings. But at the third reading, I, I will request that we do pass it on the emergency basis, because that emergency basis of 30 days would take us past the grant application deadline.
Mr. Russell.
But, but here you're asking just for permission to apply, correct?
To execute the partnership agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Baumann.
Just, just out of curiosity, because this will be coming up later, something we've been kind of talking about, running of sanitary sewer lines, could, could a fund like this be used by individual homeowners to run, say, the laterals from their home to the sanitary sewer lines in the event they cannot afford it themselves?
I don't believe that the CHIP dollars can be used in that fashion, but the county does have, and, and it's been used in the city in the past, I believe on Bluebonnet. It's called WPCLF. It stands, I don't know what it stands for, water and something, but it is a grant fund. And if there are, the, the issue with that is they have to meet the low to moderate income threshold, and then that can pay for the connection to their home. So if there are those, if you're aware of those, let's connect the dots and have them talk with our office, and we can get them into the application process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
Matt, I'll ask the question one more time. Yes, we're authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership, and then she, along with the Hancock County Commissioners, would apply for the grant. So it's in essence, we are giving her permission to enter into an agreement so that she can, so we, we can apply, correct? I mean.
Correct.
This is generally something that we take care of, we would take care of tonight. We're, we're giving permission to, in essence, apply for, in partnership with the county, to apply for this thing.
Correct.
Thank you.
Letter to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin Regarding Insurance. Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding insurance payment for repairs of a police department vehicle from an accident.
Letter to be filed.
Summary financial reports as of March 31st, 2024.
Report to be filed.
Board of Zoning Appeals minutes for March 14th, 2024.
Minutes to be filed.
Municipal, Findlay Municipal Court Activities Report for March 2024.
Report to be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding union negotiation process.
Ms. Frishy?
This letter, I guess I was surprised to read it in the council packet, to that the union negotiations were going on, which I knew. I don't know, I'm assuming a council member must have asked to be part of those union negotiations. And I find it odd that if a council member wanted to be part of those discussions to listen and learn, or whatever it was they're looking for, that they couldn't be, only because at the end of the day, it comes back to council to approve those union contracts. So, I guess I'm just looking for a little more understanding of where this came from, and why council, who appropriates the money? If there is someone, I don't know if it's, it wasn't me that asked for it, so can you explain a little bit background on that letter?
Mr. Martin?
So, negotiate, excuse me, negotiations have not started. We just wanted to get through the eclipse, and we've been trying to get some dates on the calendar, but we have not started at this point. So, there were just some discussions about who to involve. Historically, it's progressed over years in contracts, where it used to be very formal, and they had legal representation from out of city that would come in and support each side, and the relationships have grown over the years. And this last union negotiation, three years ago, I ran those, and it brought in our local legal team, and the mayor was actively involved with the chiefs with the respective unions, and we marched through them and found a nice balance, we thought, with fair and equitable union contracts. And as this one has progressed or gotten closer, we've prepared ourselves to sit down again, and there were questions about why some people would like to be involved and more informed, and we said we can maintain a, we can continue to inform people on a frequent basis on what the process is, or what the negotiation points are, but the relationships that have been established at the negotiation table leave them where they are. And as we started having these discussions, we found that there's actually case law out there that says that a city in the state of Ohio, council was negotiating with, having discussions about negotiations with the unions, and it was actually found to be an unfair labor practice. So, as the questions were asked, we were looking into it, and they're like, well, in fact, that's something that would be contradictory to make this happen. So, we looked into it, and it was actually served case law, so we're like, let's just keep it as it is. So, that's why I wanted to inform everyone that the contract negotiations were going to start, so you were all informed of that. And just to put that information out there, that this was brought up, just for as a reference, that there's case law out there that supports this is probably not a good idea.
Mayor?
I know the auditor requested to have more detail on the case, so we'll have Assistant Law Director Feigner put a summary together and distribute it to you all. He's the one who did the initial review and summary, just to make sure that we were applying with applicable laws, so we can put together a summary for you guys on that.
Mr. Stachek.
That's right. It was too fast for me. So, I guess I appreciate you mentioning that for historical benefit for council. I think it's, the attorney who represented the city in the past, his name was Gary Johnson. He did it for years, did a wonderful job working with the city. And at no time in the past, to my knowledge, and not even in the negotiations I participated in when I was your city service director, did the council member negotiate or participate in negotiating with the unions. They were there in a more an observational role, so that when things came up, that would likely be a concern to council, they could speak with the administration, whether it be the mayor, or the service safety director, or the service director, depending on the structure at the time, to caution or make sure they were thoroughly vetted. And I guess that would be my advice too. In this situation, there have been a number of times in the past when the auditor's office was not consulted, when things were agreed to, that couldn't be done. Everything from how pay was to look on the pay stub to health insurance items. So, and if there are any things, I guess, I guess I'm going to kindly give the advice to the negotiators and the administration that they do speak with us when it comes to fiscal matters or health insurance matters, and keep us informed, and of course, we know those things are confidential. But I think it's important for historic note, that you folks know, it was common, and council never negotiated, to my knowledge.
Mr. Webster?
Rob, thanks for the details on that, and I guess I'm, you're going to get, or Rob Feigner's going to get additional details about this case for us. I was the one that made the request, wasn't for myself personally, it was just for council's involvement, and so that's where this came from. So, if anybody was wondering about that. I guess I'm, I'm struggling with the idea that you just have unilaterally decided to take us out of this process, even though we are the final arbiter of what you do. It was common practice before. I know it was when my father was safety service director, when Gary Johnson was there at the table. That was a thing, and it made things run much smoother because council was informed as we went along. Previously, since I've been here, this is a black box that opens up and throws something at us and says, here, approve this. I don't really like that process, hence the reason I brought this up about six months ago. Well, maybe not that long, three months ago. And I guess I'm a little disturbed with this letter just outright saying that, no, it's against law. And just dismissing it out of hand, Rob. Because that's not the case. It may have been the case the last time you did it, maybe when, last time when Paul Smelzer was involved, but that's not the case historically. I think city council should have the ability to listen in on these conversations, and to at least be able to then bring information back to council. I know Ron Monday sat in on these when he was, because he was a former policeman. So, anyhow, I appreciate what you're trying to do with your letter, but I think you've caused more questions than you answered on this.
Mayor?
Yeah, I'll step in here for a hot second. Appreciate your feedback on the letter. Just because something was done away in the past doesn't mean it was proper. So, we will follow up. There is case law out there that says council should not be involved. If that is not the case, and there is a way to have council involved, we are not opposed to that. We were approached to say, hey, council wants to be involved. And yes, Council President Monday did, said in, mainly because the union said they were okay with it, and then he realized, hey, actually, he shouldn't be in these discussions. That was, again, that was the past. We're responsible for the present and the future. So, we looked into it to make sure, what was our city policy? How has it been approached in the past? And what is the legal standard for how it should be handled? Now, as the administration, we are the lead entity in the negotiation. Council then is the authorizing entity to appropriate the funds and authorize us to enter into the contract. Can communication be more beneficial throughout the process? Yes, but as anyone who's been involved in the negotiation is aware, things change as we go along. There's a give and take. So, we will get a updated legal opinion from our law director's office, and if there are more specific details that would allow a council member to be involved, we're happy to approach that. But please don't say that we are trying to hide anything. We also understand, yeah, and so, let's just make sure that that's not what is being implied, because there is a deep relationship here, and as we all know, that sometimes, if you bring other players into the game, there can be a lack of trust in that. And so, we are finding that balance to make sure that we're all doing the best work on behalf of the City of Findlay. We have nothing to hide in that process, and I'll leave it there.
Ms. Frishy?
So, the reason I brought the question up was, I assumed it was observation. I don't think any council member wants to get into wheeling and dealing. However, I guess a couple questions slash comment. I do know council's been involved in the past, just as Jeff said. So, are you, and I also know we used to hire outside legal counsel to negotiate all of this, and we talked about how it saved the city money, but when we start talking words like deep relationships and negotiations, that's getting, that's sounding a little gray to me. Love our fire and police and our union guys. That's great. I think our guys do a great thing. Did you even ask the union about Jeff, or somebody from council sitting in and observing on this? Or did we quickly go to, hey, we have to come? Here's how I look at it. I feel like you're combating city council requests by going straight for a legal opinion. I think that's bizarre. So, did you ask, did you ask the union if a council person could be part of it? Yes or no? And the rest of it, I shared with it.
Was that directed to Mr. Martin?
The mayor, I would say Mr. Martin, but the mayor's throwing her hand up, so I don't care who answers it.
Well, they both have their hands.
I'll start and hand it to Rob, because I literally just said a moment ago that we looked at city policy, we looked at union policy, and we consulted legal counsel. So, we did all three of those things.
That wasn't my question.
Mr. Martin?
So, a couple things. Number one, the, to the auditor's point, we did in fact provide language that was agreed upon, so they could facilitate the payroll and insurance things, and Carolyn was involved in that. But after the fact that we, he did provide us feedback, that we could do it differently in a more efficient manner in the future. So, again, lessons learned as we walk through it. The first negotiation, if you probably don't recall, I was about six weeks into the job. So, we were learning the opportunity, or learning as we walked through it. To your point, Councilwoman Frishy, I did in fact talk to the unions, both unions, and I asked about the history. To your point, Councilman Webster, and they're like, why would we have them at the table during negotiations, number one? Number two, the last one that they could make reference to was Mr. Mondain, about him being involved, Monday, excuse me, that he was involved, and they questioned why that you should be at the table during the negotiations when in fact, we've established a mutually amicable relationship. Take that and spin it any way you want, but at the end of the day, we're looking out for the benefit of the citizens of the city when we're negotiating that contract with the service safety individuals, this community. So, any implication that there's any deep-vetted relationships, I take offensive, and it's questioning my integrity. We have the legal involvement at the table, and we're walking through this amicably.
Okay. Mr. Webster?
Rob, as of now, who's sitting at the table for the administration and the city?
We have not established who exactly would be, but I would be taking lead, and we would have the legal team involved, and then when necessary, we have our Director of Human Resources when those things are needed to be walked through, and then the mayor.
Okay, so, you're having our legal team. So, Mr. Feigner, Mr. Rasmussen?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Ms. Frishy?
Did we pass the ordinance to allow for negotiation yet? I can't remember. Don't we usually pass an ordinance? We have not done that yet, so we're not even in negotiations. So, if we want to have further discussion on that agreement, I think maybe that would be worth some conversation later down the road before we pass it.
I don't know if we do.
Don't we usually?
When you signed us, you authorized entering into a three-year contract, then it, we just have to, by expiration of that, we have to go into negotiations.
But we have to write a new ordinance, do we not, Law Director?
Mr. Feigner?
We didn't.
Let him answer.
Could you ask a question again, so I hear it in full?
So, typically, I'm going off of my memory, which might be bad, right? I thought we would pass legislation that allows whomever to go into union negotiations. So, if, as she's saying, if we had a three-year that's expiring, it automatically allows, I would think it would automatically allow you, once we have another saying who we want, because what if, what if council wants to hire outside legal? I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, what if? So, you need an ordinance. Am I correct?
Right, I understand what you're asking, and I think the key answer to that is, is what is in that contract, and what was the ordinance for that? What's the language in that ordinance? And it might say something like what you said, that it's an ongoing thing, but that, I understand your concern that that might not make sense if you want something, a discussion that's on completely different components of it, to add outside counsel or something like that. Somebody needs to find that, that ordinance is what I would recommend.
Yeah, I mean, it sounded like that we, first answer is, we haven't passed it yet, and then it was, well, our old contract said three years. So, I would like to know, we typically are always allowing the administration to negotiate and enter into contract for different things. So, if you can find that, email council or appropriations, that'd be lovely.
Letter to be filed. Committee reports.
Water and Sewer Committee met on April 1st, 2024 to determine policies and procedures for instituting utility billing rate changes. We recommend scheduling another meeting to finalize recommendations to the full council for policies and procedures for instituting utility billing rate changes. And Service Safety Director Martin and Council Representative Russell, recommendation changes to the water rules and stormwater rules that would implement the committee's recommendations for instituting utility billing rate changes.
Move to accept the committee report.
Second, Mr. DeArmond. Discussion. Ms. Frishy?
I don't, I was at the committee. I don't understand bullet point number two. Service Safety Director Martin and Council Representative Russell, recommendation changes to water and sewer storm rules that would implement the committee's recommendation for instituting utility billing rate changes. Help me understand what that even means.
Rob and I are going to get together, take the, and create draft of the water rules and stormwater rules that incorporate the committee's, the committee's direction in this, and then, and then bring it back to the Water and Sewer Committee for a final review before making a recommendation to a full council. And at a high level, the things that we'll add is, it says that there will be an annual review, starting with, that the administration will bring to the Water and Sewer Committee with, with rate changes, and that would come in, I think it was in Q3 of the, of the year, the Water and Sewer Committee would either recommend adoption of those rates or not, and then depending on whether it's water, storm, or sanitary, there's different avenues for actual implementation. Some Rob can, or the Service Safety Director can do on his own, others takes legislation, and it would, the rules would lay out the steps necessary for each of the utilities for implementing any recommended rate changes.
Mr. Stachek?
I was concerned that I might hear a statement similar to that tonight, that rate changes are being considered, much like with the water. I think it deserves to be known on the public record at this point, that I would caution council about any consideration of rate changes until we get utility billings housed in order with regard to the monies and whatnot. So, let's go step at a time, and let's not talk about rate changes. We can talk about process, but if you're going to talk about rate changes, please get ahold of me.
Ms. Frishy?
So, I guess my first concern is Safety Service Director and Council Representative, the Service Safety Director's not part of your committee, and, and I thought from this whole beginning, when we raised water rates 50%, that Councilman Ballman agreed to send this committee to determine who has the authority who has the authority to raise rates inside the city limits? And an annual review and, uh, and discussing rate changes in quarter three and giving a recommendation really doesn't mean anything. Because you have no authority. At this point, you're saying the Safety Service Director can do whatever he wants. And if that's what you're going to leave it at and not pass an ordinance giving authority inside the city limits like you have outside, why bring it to committee at all? Your, your committee report just means, hey, we talked about it. And, and so your recommendation, this whole committee discussion, I think is off kilter. And I'm not supporting the committee report because of that.
Mr. Baumann.
Well, I, I guess I would remind Councilwoman Frishy that we have mitigated who has the authority. Or, excuse me, shall I say? We have already had the conversation as to who has the authority and, and, and with regard to a higher revised code. So this is simply a conversation between the individual who has the authority to make the rate changes and council to do what you just said. To talk about rate changes and how that should operate in the future. So, I, I guess I'm not really understanding where you're coming from, because we've already talked about that at length.
Mr. Wobser.
From my understanding, the way I read this is that you guys are in the process of drafting a new process for rate changes. Is that correct?
Mr. Russell.
It, uh, it's, it sets forth the steps for, uh, review of utility rates on an annual basis. It doesn't say that they will be, uh, increased in Q3 of this year or next year. It just says that, uh, here is the process that we're asking, uh, uh, the administration to work with and, uh, to work with council. And, uh, putting forth a timeline for that, for that process. Uh, it, in a, so, so in, in essence, to your question, yes, we are just talking about the process uh, and the timeline for, uh, the, an annual review of utility rates. And at which time, if there would be a, a rate increase, it would be brought up through that process. Uh, my expectation, uh, for this year is that there will be no, uh, utility rate increase.
Ms. Frishy.
So Councilman Wobser, you just, you made this statement, are they, are they looking at doing anything? To me, it's no different than saying every year on appropriations, we're going to review the capital. We don't have an ordinance that says it. We just do it, we have a conversation, we review it. Um, the difference with the water, i- i- if Councilman Baumann wants to say that I don't know what I'm talking about, or that you've already determined off a higher revised code, then pass an ordinance, if you're so comfortable with it. Pass an ordinance saying the Safety Service Director has full authority to raise water rates inside the city limits. And then you can't hear from me anymore. I won't support it, but you won't hear from me. And then
Thank you.
From there, I'm not done.
You're being argumentative.
No, I'm not being argumentative. You know.
Let it go.
So, I, so, you know what? You are a piece of work.
Oh, crap.
Nope, and so from there, I will finish my comment, while you sit across the way and smirk because you think you're proving a point. Grow up. So, if we want to, I am not going to get in a back and forth with you. You, get your gavel out.
Ms. Frishy, make your point and move on. Make your point and move on.
Don't rush me. Do you do that to any councilman in this room? No, no, you don't.
Come on, Holly.
Well, you know what, child?
That's, that's a unfair comment.
Let me make my statement.
You're making a misogynistic comment that we're a bunch of, that is just absolutely not true.
Does he ever rush you?
I get my questions done in a very timely manner.
I don't get to.
No, well, we can talk about that.
Too much, but you know, when I ran for commissioner, I kept my minutes less than yours. So, back to the comment at hand. Either pass an ordinance giving authority or really have the discussion of determining it, because you simply saying you're going to discuss an annual review, are you still talking about spending a million dollars? Which is what happened in your first meeting that came up? To hire an outside company? To tell you if you're raising rates at the right rate or not? Even though we raised 50% because we didn't have enough money? Are we still talking about that? Or are we just going to say, hey, administration, how's it going? Here's our review. And that's it? Because your committee report means nothing to the citizens of this community, because you have no teeth to it. So pass an ordinance.
And that's your opinion.
So, so you don't feel you need to pass an ordinance, it's a joke.
All those in favor of the committee report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Committee report is adopted.
Sorry, I'm just making a note. The Water and Sewer Committee met on April 1st, 2024 to discuss the West Park sanitary projects. We recommend go to bid for sanitary projects on Tappan Street and Newell Street, serving six houses with an estimated cost of $420,000. Waive tap fees for owners of eight affected properties on Tappan Street, Newell Street, and Lima Avenue. Work with Hancock Public Health and Hancock Regional Planning Commission to secure financial assistance as needed for owners of the eight affected properties on Tappan Street, Newell Street, and Lima Avenue. And direct City Engineer to work with the property owners of 1601 and 1739 Lima Avenue to establish a plan for connections to the city sanitary sewers from these properties.
Mr. Russell.
Move, uh, committee report be accepted.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion, Mr. Russell.
Yes, this was actually a, a, a real good meeting. Uh, the, 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 we started this by examining a conversation about alternatives to, um, uh, putting in these sewers and, 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 and if there was, if there were, if there were other alternatives, other technologies that could be looked at. And I appreciate, once again, uh, West Park's Robin Welly and, uh, and her husband, actually, uh, had a lot of, uh, a very good, uh, conversa, or input into this meeting, along with, uh, uh, City Engineer Calb. And, uh, we had, uh, I think folks from the Water Department, once again, there for this meeting. And, um, so a lot of good discussion. And, and the end result and what the, what the committee is, is recommending, and it's, it was, uh, part of our, um, it was part of our, uh, uh, capital plan that, uh, these, that these sanitaries be, uh, ran. And actually, last, at our last meeting, we, uh, moved forward with, I believe it was a Tappan Street uh, sanitary, because it had already been, uh, designed and we thought we could, uh, get it out to bid and get better pricing. But the committee, in essence, uh, recommended, uh, to go forth, go through with, or continue on with what had been decided previously. It wa, it was a checkpoint. It was, uh, it was good exercise, and I appreciate the, uh, the, the folks at the meeting for their, uh, uh, for their input and their, uh, conversation on the topic.
Mr. Baumann.
Yeah, if I may, um, I just wanted to, to make a few comments here. Um, while I'm in support of this project and the extension of much-needed infrastructure in an area of town that often feels neglected, I remain concerned about the added financial burden on the residents and residents of my neighborhood and my ward. The installation of lateral piping from the homes on Tappan Street and Newell Street on, on the new, newly, to the newly constructed sanitary sewer lines now falls on the individual homeowners. While some will call, qualify for financial assistance, it remains to be seen how much of the estimated cost can or will be covered. Because ultimately, as I understand it, the true cost cannot be fully known until the ground is broken by the contractor hired by the property owner for installation. While I imply, I applaud the West Park Block Watch for their efforts, one might wonder if the projects approved at the last council meeting with my support will create more hardship than the status quo. I can say with the utmost certainty that I do not personally have five, 10, or even $15,000 laying around to cover such costs if it were my property being affected. I would guess that that is the case for most of the individuals involved, uh, on these, on these streets as well. I am encouraged that my, my colleagues on the Water and Sewer Committee join me in support of waiving the tap fees, which amounts to roughly $500 for connection to the aforementioned lateral line to the prospective sanitary sewer line. I will cast my vote in, to approve this committee report, but my concerns linger for the families affected. Thank you.
Mr. Russell.
Matt, you early, earlier mentioned that you wanted to be, uh, uh, you wanted us to let you know about th- these, these, uh, opportunity, or these situations, Tappan, Newell, and Lima Avenue. And, and, um, I am interested to, to know about funding opportunities for, uh, citizens. I know that, uh, the Health Department works on some of them and they are, they are means tested. Uh, I'm looking, uh, how do you help folks who, who, uh, might not hit the means testing, uh, uh, funding and other alternatives for folks like that?
Uh, the nice thing about WPCLF is it's, there's a graduated scale. You can be covered 100%, you can be covered 50%. Um, Brian's office is about 30 feet from mine, uh, so tomorrow we'll have a discussion. One, I want to find out how much money is currently available, um, at the county. Two, uh, the Health Department always debates whether they should apply for another round. Um, with this information, you know, it suggests that they probably do. But, uh, I will get with Brian tomorrow and, and we'll start working on how we can, how much money is available and how, if and when it's time to connect, how we can make sure that every resident has an opportunity to apply.
Thank you.
Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Hellman.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. You know, one of the things that concerns me about this is not only the, the gross amount of money that we're, that we're putting into it, but how this uh, subdivision ever got approved to begin with. You know, we had a residential project apparently being constructed in an area that was not, not fit for it, just in terms of the base that, that it was built on. In terms of getting water lines, sewer lines, gas lines, you name it, out there. And in my opinion, uh, and it must have happened years ago, but I, I, I'm still flabbergasted that it ever got approved to begin with. And now it comes back to the city to bail it out and, and take care of a, of, of a situation that needs to be rectified. But I would say going forward, um, I wouldn't be in favor of these kinds of things. But for the sake of what we've got here, I think we probably ought to do it. But it, it, um, kind of galls me that, that we're in this situation. But I understand the problem.
Mr. DeArmit.
I struggled with this one. I mean, $420,000, you know, 70 grand a house. You know, it's a lot of money. And, and, and so Brian's, uh, concern was with the homeowners. I guess I'm more concerned about, you know, the rest of our sewer users, our, the other, the rest of the tax, for the sewer users. So, and we're bailing this neighborhood out. And I struggled with that. I mean, so, um, we had a subject matter expert come in and talk about, you know, the, the installing these systems in West Park. And our committee, after listening to them, we all agreed that these systems are all failing. They're old and they're not working correctly. And, um, and it was, you know, the latest quote we heard was $19,000 to rebuild a septic system. You know, and they're all, they're all the, the age of the house. You know, I mean, they're all 50 years plus old, probably. And, uh, so they're all failed. And the only way to solve it long-term is with sewers. I mean, if we just keep putting new septic leach fields in, I mean, we're going to be replacing them every 20 years and it'll, it'll just never end, you know? So, I, I guess that's kind of why I'm in favor of, and so we're going to just solve it once and for all. And, you know, we could have put an assessment on these property owners. Like you could take the 420 and put it, I don't know, over 20 years, whatever, I don't know how that works, but you could put an assessment on the property, but to Brian's point, they can't afford, they wouldn't be able to afford that. I, I'd be afraid we'd be foreclosing on homes, you know, and, um, so. So reluctantly, I am in support of this, but, um, it is a lot of money. And I was, and we did get a commitment from the, the Health Department that they're willing to enforce, um, that they need to tap, they need to tap in. They weren't, I, I was very concerned about putting these sewers in and then nobody's using them. Nobody has money to tap in and they just sit there and we're building this bridge to nowhere, right? So that was my concern. And, but the Health Department is, um, is in support of this project and, and they're going to send letters to them and they will be required to, to tap in. So, thank you.
Mr. Stacey.
Briefly, for the benefit, I, a, a lot of the, you know, we have few members here, elected officials here, who aren't from Finley originally. This neighborhood is an old neighborhood, West Park. Uh, it almost was a, a standing community. It may have been a village. I, I don't think so, but it might have been, had a, had a railroad depot. And, uh, like every other old neighborhood, pre-1900 neighborhood in Finley, they had outhouses, privies, whatnot, throughout the city. Have taken care of that. And for your benefit also, regularly, there are one or two owners that call the city auditorists and they say, Jim, we keep paying this money and this is how much I think we paid, is that right? And I say, yeah, that looks right, and we still haven't got sewer. So you have been collecting money from people for these services for a very, very long time. And I only share that, again, as informational, but I think it's worth knowing, as you.
I don't believe, I don't believe that's true, Jim. So, the, I wish Jeremy were here, because we went through the sewer, water and sewer records to find out who has had sewer records. These, these six individuals, uh, there might be other cases, you might be correct in other ones, John, but, but these, specific to these six, have not been paying into the sewer fund. One more point just about West Park. We are putting water system in, out there. And it's, um, I want to say over the next two years, it's like 1.3 million dollars. It's servicing 450 houses, it's a great project. They have been paying into the water fund for decades and have been underserved, low pressure, low flow. And they're, they're long overdue on the water side, so that's a great project.
Mr. Hellman.
If I can ask another question, if I might, if, um, this is ongoing and we're extending water to some other residential lots out there, does that mean that there could be lots that go up for sale and people building homes out there that are not there now? I don't know who that's directed to, maybe, uh,
Mayor?
Service Director Martin? He looks at me like, don't ask me.
We're like, who's drawing the short straw over here?
That's right.
Where's Jeremy? No, I'm just kidding. I'm sure he'd rather be with us than at home, not feeling well. Um, so, to be clear, the projects that we're doing are updating their existing infrastructure, creating additional connectivity, so there's better pressure, better flow. We're not extending it to areas where there's open lots for development. Um, that's not the project.
That's, that's not the water project.
Correct, that's not the water project. The sewer projects, there could potentially be development along there because of where the line is located. There is some open properties around that. But again, that's not the purpose of that project either. And, so, no.
Okay.
All those in favor of the committee report say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The committee report is adopted.
An ad hoc committee met on April 9th, 2024 to discuss, uh, to continue discussions from the March 13th, 2024 and March 26th, 24, ad hoc committee meetings on reviewing the 2024 to 2025 council rules of procedure. We recommend the adoption of the attached changes to the rules of procedure for city council meetings.
Mr. Hellman.
Um, I'd like to just make a comment and apologize for not checking.
Hang, hang on a second, we have to, have to have a motion and a second to adopt the committee report. Mr. Russell.
I thought you called on me.
Mr. Russell.
I, uh, uh, move that the committee report be adopted.
Second, Mr. DeArmit. Now you can comment, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was out of order.
Just following the, the rules like I do on everything.
I know, you do a wonderful job at that, too. I just wanted to extend an apology for not checking my eye box. It was brought to my attention that I attended the meeting, I signed the report, but I did not check my eye box, so. I was there and approved.
Duly noted. Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Niemeyer.
There's still going to be more discussion on this?
Uh, Mr. DeArmit.
Yes, so, um, yes, the answer is, um, so we've had three meetings. We've taken public comment at two council meetings, tonight is the third council meeting. Um, still taking comments, so, um, I've had lots of conversations with people in the audience, telephone calls, meetings, and city council administration. So, please send us your comments, still taking comments, it's not final. So, uh, we're not voting on this tonight to approve anything. I mean, the, the next step is, this report is going to, uh, legal. And then they're going to actually make the edits to our rules. Um, we're going to have one more meeting to approve those edits. And then And then we'll bring it back to council and then, and then actually take a vote then. So in the meantime, and then, and then actually it's even when it, even when we get approval from council, it's just going to be a, for a, a, we want to test this out. So we're going to do it for four weeks, or excuse me, four meetings, two months. And we'll be taking comments during that period also. So, so to Ann Cole. So, Ann, I, I did write 100% of the words on this, this document. But I have had so much input from it. These are not all my original thoughts by any means. I've had lots of input, so, so it's not one man dictating anything here. So I mean, and there's, and I want to say also that nothing has been approved at this point. This is just a draft proposal and it's still open for comment, so.
Mr. Niemeyer.
I don't want to get into a big conversation about this, but I was at the first three ad hoc committee meetings and I wasn't allowed to talk. If I go to the next one, will I be able to talk about my comments or?
That's at the discretion of the chair. Mr. Palmer.
If we have more than five committee members or council members, then it becomes a committee of the whole, so.
Mr. Stachak.
Mr. DeArmit, you made a wonderful example of the question I have for this. And a few moments ago, you offered a correction for me. And in a very narrow view, I agree with you. And in a wider view, I don't, because my point was wider with regard to the subdivision I was talking about. The question with regard to how the rules stand, you're saying administrators will not be able to be addressed. Will that take away our ability to do what you just did? And that is offer corrections in a professional and respectful way to administrators if we misinform? And that's an important question for, excuse me, for a lot of reasons.
I know, there, sorry.
Mr. DeArmit.
I've had a lot of comments about that one. I think we still, that, that, where is that on the? Number seven, speakers will address only city council, okay, so basically speakers will, will address only city council. So is that, is that the one you're talking about? Maybe not, I'm sorry, Jim.
No, that's exactly what I'm asking, because a lot of times information is provided to council that's incorrect. It just happens, we're all human.
That still needs more discussion, Jim. I don't know, yet, you know, that's a complicated one.
Mr. Palmer.
I misspoke previously. It's not that we would have a committee of the whole, there's only three members on the committee. So having a fourth one speak would not violate that. But I haven't pretty much allowed anybody outside of the committee to speak during the meeting to, to make sure that we stay on task. That's, that's the reason why.
So Josh, when do you want to have discussion about your draft? Do you want to wait till you have a final draft? Or what's the situation here? I'm trying to understand. I thought that's what we were going to do tonight.
Yeah.
No, the final draft, we're waiting for legal to do the meshing of this, putting this together so that the rules are spout out in a cleaner manner than what they are in this proposal.
Got it.
So that's, we thought that might be done by this meeting tonight, but the law director was on vacation.
Mr. Russell. Oh, sorry. Wait, Mr. Feigner, you want to, okay, go ahead, Mr. Russell.
Josh, just in, in the past, I've been involved in these ad hoc committees. And, and since about 2014, the committee has made the edits to councils, to councils' rules of procedure. Had the Law Department review what we created and taking the burden off of them to update our, our document. And prior to that, I believe it was Denise who would make changes to the, to the, to the forms and then, and then have folks do those edits. Not telling you how to run your committee, I'm just saying that in the past, and that was kind of as an agreement or it worked well for, for Don and his department. And, and so then I, so that's, that's one of the things that I would do on behalf of the committee, was make the edits. And, and this is obviously significant, so just stating it as a fact, or as a history.
Mr. Feigner.
I know Don, Law Director of Mass Muson, has been involved with this after my initial research on it. And certainly the only comment I would make, and I don't think I'd be stepping on his toes, is that whenever that final draft, final product that you want to present is done, that we should review it just for clarity and legality and anything else that we can look at just as a second set of eyes.
Mayor.
I just want to clarify real quick. Would you like some feedback now from the administration? Or, okay, because I know I've kind of bounced, but a couple of thoughts as I go through it. First of all, I think, you know, I appreciate council looking at this. I want to be very clear that I think that the goal of this is really just to focus our meetings on the business of running the city and not get distracted by the kind of political comments of, around us, right? There's a lot of things that have been brought to council that people want to address, but really is not anything that you all have influence over or is even being considered by council. Personally, you know, and I haven't spent a lot of times, I've kind of just been waiting for you guys to kind of see what your thoughts were and then be able to comment on a more, more final project. But a couple of comments on item six, four B. If a speaker wishes to comment on multiple agenda items, they can choose to speak at the end of the meeting. I don't necessarily think that that makes sense, because if it is an item that's on the agenda, they should be able to be heard at the beginning. So I, instead, I think that it should be able to be addressed at the beginning rather than on the case-by-case basis or at the end, because I don't think it makes sense to comment on something after it's already been voted on. But I think that they would just have to fit it within that four minutes. If they want to comment on multiple different things, it really would operate as it currently is, but tied to specific agenda items. Does that make sense?
Mr. DeArmit.
Right.
I didn't have my speaker, we may have already voted, so that, okay, so.
So in essence, somebody could say, I want to speak on agenda items three, four and five. And within their four minutes at the beginning, they just need to address all of their comments on three, four and five.
Yeah.
Additionally, on C, I would make it an or statement where it is the number of speakers or a time limit on a specific topic. Again, I think that there was some concerns brought up of if you just have people filibustering on one topic, but there's somebody they hear wants to speak on another topic. I don't want them to not have the opportunity to speak. So I think that there's a way to kind of group that there. It's like a maximum of four speakers or 30 minutes on a given topic, something along those lines. And then I would personally, I understand that this is a city council meeting. I think we need to revisit number seven. I have no problem with people coming and talking to the administration about issues. I, you know, I, I want people to call and email and write and they do all those things on a regular basis, but I understand that there's something to being heard in a public setting and feeling that your, your comments are getting beyond the conversation with myself or any of the other elected officials. I think again, hopefully some of these kind of guidelines just realign everybody to the fact that it needs to be business that we're actually dealing with and not, hey, we're going to go land on Mars and mayor don't allow it. Well, that's not within my control, so I'm talking to the wrong person. So I think that maybe again, just saying that people need to align it to something specific on their, their form, to make sure that it is actually about things that are pertinent to city. But I have, I think people should be able to come and in some fashion, be able to address myself or other members of the administration.
Mr. Niemeyer.
I was going to say, I don't know. Is all the conversation, is this, you want me to spout off or should I wait for the add hot committee meeting?
No, please do.
If we're going to have another ad hoc committee meeting, let's go on with business.
Let's do it now. This is important.
Okay, I've been on city council for 14 years. I don't think any rules need to be changed. The public should be allowed to talk like they have four minutes. We can always extend the time like usual. And a lot of speakers, just like last meeting, the Parkinson's lady, she said what she wanted to say, got a certificate from the mayor, she got her coat on, she left. Why should she sit between a meeting, which I've been at 20-minute meetings, I've been at three-hour meetings? And now I see city council change. It just seems like younger, newer councilmen get a burp their butt about something and they want to change the rules. I mean, if this went on all the time, we'd probably have five bases instead of three to run to, you know, in a baseball game. So that's, I just think we really need to look at stuff. There's a couple of things, Denise needs more time. But I mean, back with the old administration, everything worked fine. We had policemen in a city council meeting for probably six months to a year, because there were maybe some speakers that could get out of hand and we took care of it. So I, I think that's it, but look out, I may come back.
Mr. Stachak.
With council being the funding authority for the entire city and in my case, the City Auditor's Office and my staff, there are times, when else are you going to hear things about what I'm doing that the public mayor may not like? So in the spirit of our first speaker this morning, who I appreciate very much, or this evening, damn it, I ain't scared. You don't have to change it on my behalf. You can let people address me, it's not going to bother me.
Ms. Freshy.
From what I'm hearing from everybody, including the mayor, I mean, it doesn't sound like we need to change the speaking process for the citizens to speak to their elected officials. I mean, if, if we're okay with the mayor being addressed and if we're thinking that it's more appropriate to stay at the beginning for public comment and if people fill out their forms and want to talk on specific ordinances that are in the council packet and they put it on there, great. You know, I, I appreciate the mayor gave her input, but it's just, it's council's rules, not the administration rules. And I, and I think the citizen, Ann, who's, Ann Cole, who spoke, asking the question of transparency and, and Mr. DeArmit said that this whole section was written by you, these were your thoughts. I think what maybe you were looking for, I know I was looking for it, was a more organic conversation with, between the ad hoc committee publicly. Did anybody else have any ideas or was it just you, Dan? I mean, I guess that's, I think that's what you were getting at.
Mr. DeArmit.
I had lots of input from people. I mean, well, even at the, even at the ad hoc committee, but we, I've had conversations with lots of people in the, in the audience.
That's not what I mean. I mean, the ad hoc committee comprised of three members of council.
I mean, I, I had my.
And so that, so she's asking and I'm asking, you, you comprised this, there was no other discussion or input. You said this was all yours. Did any other members of council give input or they give it to you before the meetings to add to this list?
No, not before the meet, no. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't violate any sunshine laws. Okay, no, I understand, but, but hang on, but, but it was an iterative process. I mean, I put, this was the third, this document is the third re, third rendition of it, you know what I mean? So, I mean, it started off, the first one.
I agree with that.
Okay, so, I mean, we just kept, just, it started out small and I just kept getting more input and the, and the document grew. I mean, I don't know, I'm answering your question, but what, what, help me.
Help me, help me.
Well, I mean, what's your question?
So this, this document was your.
My document was the starting point for a conversation.
But it didn't navigate off of that really. Yes, you had some citizens coming up and speaking and stuff, but there was no organic conversation in the meeting. They were 20 minutes long. So she's asking, I'm asking, who else, who gave you an idea? I, I mean, and that's, I think that's where they were getting at. They, transparency, not with the citizens, not with emails and phone conversations, but did you just have your conversations one-on-one with the other committee members in advance?
No.
Okay, all right.
No, I mean, I can, we can go down through and I can tell you whose ideas. I mean, the, the first, first and third was my idea. The second one was Grant's idea. The fourth is Patty Klein's ideas. The fifth and sixth didn't change. And we can go through the whole list. I mean, the 60-minute clock came from Russ and Jim and from the, from the initiative. I mean, that was our conversation. I don't know, we can keep going, but.
Mr. Russell.
Yeah, I, I had conversations with Denise concerning some concerns or changes that she, she had. And she had the conversations with me because I had led this effort in the past. And I forwarded her, her request on to Committee Chair Palmer and with a little bit of my suggestions on, on her request. So that, you know, so there was some of my input directed to Josh and then he chose whether to take my, it was his choice what he decided to do with the input. And I see some of the items here listed.
I got a question for Chairman Palmer. So under your recommendation, you say the adoption of the attached changes to the rules and procedure for city council meetings, is it your intention to adopt this, this evening? Or is it to continue discussion and with adoption coming at a later date?
Adoption coming at a later date.
I think you need to amend that, just to make that clear.
I move that the committee report be amended, that the adoption will take place at a future date.
Second, Mr. Russell, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment say aye. Any opposed, nay? I'm sorry, was there a nay? Okay. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the committee report as amended, say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
The committee report is adopted.
One more committee report. No, I don't.
Okay. All right, committee report.
The Appropriations Committee to whom was referred a request to discuss the purchase of a new fire truck. We recommend approval of $1,600,000 for a new, I hope I pronounced this right, Sutton?
Sutfin.
Fire truck and equipment and the signing of the associated contract.
Mr. Wilbs.
I'd make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second, Ms. Morneke, discussion? Mr. Wilbs.
The, we had a lot of good discussion on this and, on the meeting. The chief did a super job of getting us the information on this. It's unfortunately, one of these situations has come out of COVID where we have to put an order in for something that we're going to get two years from now. And between when we had this meeting and today, actually yesterday, the chief did find out from Sutfin that they will not hold their pricing past May 1st. So they are asking then for us to be able to get this price that we approve it this tonight. Is my understanding, Rob, am I okay on that?
Mr. Martin.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
And it's a, but, yeah, Mr. Greeno is saying it's a 3% increase, I believe, if we don't.
That is correct.
So 3% on 1.6 million.
After May 1st.
If, if we don't, don't want to interrupt. If we don't sign this purchase agreement for this vehicle to lock in the price by May 1st, it will go up, the price will go up by 3%. And we don't know what other price increases may or may not happen after that.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the committee report say aye. Any opposed, nay, the committee report is adopted. Legislation, we have no resolutions, we will start with ordinance.
Third reading for ordinance 2024-37. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring.
An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash thirty seven.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman. Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Third reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty eight. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and/or service safety director of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enter into an agreement with the Hancock County Commissioners to purchase required land within the benching area in order to finish phase one of the benching project, appropriating and transferring funds there too, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wobser.
Before we had some discussion on this, Mayor, do you want to bring us up to date on where we're at with the commissioners on this situation? Do, should we table this, is my question?
No, this is related to fa- oh, sorry. This is related to, this is related to phase one benching. So this is the R and D, um, property, perform, R and D performance property that they have been in, uh, court over and to get this settled and moved on and this project complete, the city is stepping up to get it done.
I'm going to repeat my question. Should we table this until we get the rest of things straightened out?
Do I want to use this to get the commissioners to do the right things in other situations? That's very tempting, however, no, I'd like to get this issue resolved.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay. Oh, I'm sorry. With the discussion prior to the motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Wobser. Second, Mr. Greeno. Any further discussion, Mr. Stachak?
Clarification on the record, was there a phase two done on this property?
Mayor?
This, they've done all of the work around the area. They've actually already done all of the dirt work except for around one specific location. I do not remember specifically off the top of my head, but work has already been done in this area as part of the benching. That was part of the legal issues, Matt, do you recall, on the R and D performance or whatever it is called today?
I thought, probably won't be helpful, Steve Wilson said they had an environmental, uh, company on site that was mitigating as they cleaned. Phase one?
But this is the phase one, perform R and D, we are only taking a small sliver of that property. They are keeping the rest of the parpet pro- property. This is just to purchase that small sliver. And the county, it will actually go to the, I want to you first, and then to us.
Okay, I was just sharing that little tidbit.
We're just getting them to buy it.
Mr. Stachak.
Helping contribute.
As your fiscal officer, whoop, I'm sorry, as your fiscal officer, with the known issues in these areas, I cannot recommend that you take any property into the city's possession with regard to risk to the taxpayer without knowing that a proper environmental review, phase ones and phase twos where appropriate have been done, or where we have a strong recommendation from a fiduciary of the city that it is prudent for us to move through and move forward. And from what I understand, we still do not have a fiduciary and we're all in agreement that we need one.
Mayor?
I will go call Steve Wilson to find out on this specific property. Um, this has been on our agenda and now at the third reading, so I wish this had been brought up earlier so I could have had more documentation before me because we're obviously dealing with a lot of properties. I agree on the fiduciary, we've been dealing with other things, I will continue to work on that. If you would like to hold on this for a moment, I will go call Steve Wilson to get the details on this specific property.
Mr. Russell, move to table. Second, Mr. Wobser, all those in favor of tabling ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero three eight, say aye, or aye if your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
The ordinance is tabled.
Third reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty nine. An ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty three dash zero three five that amended ordinance number twenty twenty two dash one one nine of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio to extend the current moratorium on the establishment of any skill-based amusement businesses in order for the city of Findlay, Ohio to consider incorporating the proposed additions into the current zoning code as outlined below before enacting them as part of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Baumann.
Move for adoption, ordinance number twenty twenty four dash zero three nine.
Second, Ms. Morneke, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, go ahead, Mr. Wobser.
How long is the, uh, how long does this extend the moratorium format? One year, thank you.
Any other discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser. Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
And Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty. An ordinance vacating a certain portion of a certain alley here and after referred to as the YMCA vacation in the city of Findlay, Ohio. Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to apply for funding through the Federal Aviation Administration for the rehabilitation of runway seven twenty five in order to receive funds for the construction portion of the rehabilitation of one runway seven twenty five construction at the city of Findlay Airport and if funds are awarded to enter into a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty three. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio to advertise for bids where required and enter into a contract or contracts for construction of various projects in accordance with the twenty twenty four department equipment list appropriating and transferring funds for said capital expenditures and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wobser.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty four forty three.
It's only a second reading, sorry.
So not suspend?
I withdraw that.
Yep, no problem.
Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty four. An ordinance accepting the designated area as shown on the Tall Timbers third edition subdivision plat, which has been accepted by the City Planning Commission. Second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty five. An ordinance amending chapter eleven hundred et sec of the codified ordinances of the city of Findlay, Ohio known as the zoning code by zoning the following described property as I one light industrial here and after referred to as a sheets, hat trick, Buchanan annexation. For, uh, second reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty six. An ordinance, ordinance accepting and approving an application for annexation of territory situated in the township of Allen, County of Hancock, State of Ohio and being a part of the southwest quarter of section thirty two, township two north, range eleven east, attractive land consisting of seventy seven point eight zero eight acres of land, more or less here and after referred to as the county road two thirty two twelve, sheets, hat trick, Buchanan annexation. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty eight. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director of the city of Findlay, Ohio to apply for grant funds and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Traffic Safety Office in order to receive funds for the FFY twenty twenty five impaired driving enforcement program, selective traffic enforcement program to be utilized by the city of Findlay Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Because this is a, uh, ordinance giving us permission to apply for a grant, the grant does not have any, uh, uh, match, uh, and to give the police department ample time to apply for this grant, I move that council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero four eight, be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Baumann, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman. Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser. Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
And Ms. Frisch.
The rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty eight, ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty eight.
Mr. Russell.
Move for approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero four eight.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser. Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty nine. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
Uh, because this is a simple, uh, transfer of money from, uh, the, from, uh, one fund to another so it can be put to use, so move, move that, uh, council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero four nine, be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Hellman, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser. Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty nine, ordinance twenty twenty four dash forty nine.
Mr. Hellman.
A move for approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero four nine.
Second, Mr. Palmer, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty one. An ordinance deappropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Since there's no need for these funds, they're just being deappropriated, I move that council's rules be suspended and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Niemeyer, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
And Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty one, ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty one.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash fifty one.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann. Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio to execute the necessary grant applications and agreements to receive grant funds from the Community Development Block Grant Flexible Grant Program for the Miracle Field Equipment Trail Project and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Morneke.
Um, based on the fact that this is on a time deadline and this would be a good grant for the city to receive and it needs to be done tonight, I would, um, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second, Mr. Hellman, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty two, ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty two.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash fifty two.
Second, Ms. Morneke, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty three. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio to partner with Hancock County by entering into a partnership agreement for the administration of the community housing impact and preservation, here and after referred to as CHIP program for the purpose of, uh, addressing local housing needs within Hancock County, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
This, uh, because this is a, it gives the, uh, mayor and the county the ability to apply for this, uh, program, make the motion that council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero five three, be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. DeArment, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Rules of council been suspended and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty three, ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty three.
Mr. DeArment.
Move to approve ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero fifty three.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frisch.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Morneke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
And Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty four dash fifty four. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Since this is just moving insurance money from the general fund back to the police department, I move that council's rules be suspended and ordinance number twenty twenty four dash fifty four be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. Greeno, all those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye. If your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno. Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
That was suspend.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this the second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-54, ordinance 2024-54.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to approve ordinance number 2024-54.
Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance 2024-55, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio to enroll the city of Findlay in the Bureau of Workers Compensation Group Retrospective Rating Plan and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
This is regular and ordinary business. I believe we do this annually, and us being part of the BWC Group Retrospective Rating Plan is in our best interest. Therefore, I move that council statutory rules be suspended in ordinance 2024-055, be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. DeArment. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules say aye. If your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance 2024-55, ordinance 2024-55.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of ordinance 2024-055.
Second, Mr. Wobser, discussion. Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye. If your name is called, those opposed nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnke.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.